Commissioners present, Monica Hodges, our Commissioner, is attending virtually. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. Randy, would you please read our public virtual meeting rules?
Sure. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and the end of tonight's agenda. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, simply raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. We do have a Commissioner participating virtually this evening, so it's very important for those participating virtually to keep your microphones and cameras off for the time being to avoid any background noise that may cause interference with the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout tonight's meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box, and then the staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will unmute your microphone, and you will have an opportunity to answer or ask your question at that point in time. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. The Board of Commissioners did not hold any executive session, so there is none to announce tonight. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the Board? Sure, if you please come forward and please use the microphone and give us your name and address, sir.
Did you want me to repeat it?
Yes.
My name is Stephen Poel. My address is 1415 Frederick Street, Allentown, PA 18104.
Thank you.
If I could just read a little statement here. I would like to address the police complaint procedures that are in place. After being pulled over while giving my granddaughter's driving lessons, the officer could have been more polite, professional, and proficient. I filed the police complaint over the reasoning for the traffic stop. Unfortunately, I found a system where the police police the police. No appeal except to another police officer, no civilian oversight, no legal opinion as to the interpretation of the federal court rulings regarding the circumstances of the stop. Given the recent tragic happenings, both locally and nationally, plus incidents in the township not publicized, can we afford, as a township, to not help and guide our police department to strive for excellence through proper oversight? And if I may, I'd like to leave you with four facts. 12.2% of Americans are black. 12.1% of American police officers are black. A minimum of 2.8% of South Whitehall Township residents are black. 0.0% of South Whitehall Township police are black. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board during courtesy of the floor? No one in the chat? Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, we have the approval of our April 6, 2022 Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes. They've been distributed to the Board. Any members of the Board have any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the April 6, 2022 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion is approved, 5 to 0. We have a presentation tonight, but it doesn't look like our company's...
This is the Fire Company's present.
I think we should postpone this.
To recognize greenwoods, we were asked to put it on the agenda for...
Okay, well, we'll table it for now, and we'll talk to the chief.
Sure.
Apologize for the confusion. There are no ordinances on our agenda this evening. We'll move on to resolutions. We have Agenda Item A, a resolution to approve, adopt, and place into effect the Emergency Operations Plan of South Whitehall Township, and we'll have that presented to the Board by Jeff Kelly, the South Whitehall Township Emergency Management Coordinator.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Randy and Chief Dorni. Thank you. It's a culmination of over three months of work between everybody on the emergency management staff, Chief Dorni and his staff, Randy, Herb from Public Works, the four fire chiefs, and Fire Marshal John France, and my volunteer staff from Parkland School District and other community members. So, South Whitehall Township Emergency Manager responsible for over 40 plans, which include three elementary schools, two middle schools, one high school, three, four private schools, 10 daycares, three Tier 1 reporting locations, two hospitals, two senior care centers, and a lot of other minor plans, like a Limerick nuclear plant that South Whitehall Township is a host community for, so if there was ever an event at Limerick, they would be coming to South Whitehall Township. A reception center is set up at the Pitt Ohio Center on 309, and they're dispersed to one of the shelters, would be the Parkland High School or the Orfield Middle School. So, we play an integral part of the emergency plan of Limerick as well. So, what I'm presenting to you tonight are three boilerplate plans from the state that has to be adopted by the Commissioners. Really, there's three parts to it. The Emergency Operating Plan, which is a public document that has to be posted in the library, township building, and a few other locations as well. And then there's the Emergency Operating Plan, which is called TAB 2, and the Functional Checklist, which has how to get the EOC going, and contacts, and things like that. So, and then there's another 30 sections which aren't public that are, you know, distributed to only on a need-to-know basis, because a lot of the documents in there, Dorney Park, Geochemicals, Parkland High Schools, are secure documents that they don't want out in the general public's hands, so we're responsible for keeping those secure as well. So, it's been, the entire document has been over, gone over by Chief Dorni and his staff, Randy, all the fire chiefs, Herb from Public Works, and John France, Commissioner Kizkara Vich, so everybody's had a chance to look at it. And so, I'm here tonight to get your permission to get it adopted and formally turned over to Lehigh County, which then turns it over to the State of Pennsylvania. We have to do this every four years.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board on the Emergency Operations Plan?
Thank you.
Mr. Osborne?
Commissioner Kelly, I don't have any questions about the plan itself. Jeff, thank you for pulling this together. It's, the plan itself, words are work enough to get done, but it's also the communication and training that everyone, you know, in emergency service is aware, this is the plan, this is what it says. My question is this, though. Earlier in the year, there was some communication about NIMS training. Is, can I ask the status of that? And that's basically training for the Commissioners?
Oh, yes. I can forward that to you. I figured you guys have enough going on, but it's about maybe four to six hours each class. You're responsible for IS-100 and IS-700, but yes, it's a class that's online only. Afterwards, you take the test, and you're, that's all you do, you get a certificate afterwards. Like Chief Dorni and his police department all get that through their training at the police academy, the fire guys, everything. Besides, need IS-100 and 700, they need 200, 300, which is a two-day course, 400, which is a four-day course, 800, and 860, so there's a lot of other NIMS classes that are out there. But the basic one that you guys would be required is IS-100 and 700. Matter of fact, I have the email ready to go with the NIMS nomenclatures on there, the link to GoToThis to the, it's to the Federal Emergency Management Training Center, so I can probably send that to you during the meeting.
During the meeting, okay. Isn't it a requirement, though, that at least on a board of five, at least three Commissioners out of the five must be trained?
There is no...
Gone through the course?
There's no real requirement about training, as long as, they say it's a good idea. I haven't seen anywhere that it is completely required, as long as the township manager, the police chief, and all the rank and file are all, you know, certified in NIMS, but they always highly recommend it. I would probably say probably less than 5% of the state of Pennsylvania municipalities, elected officials are certified in NIMS, but it's a tribute to you guys that you want to get, and I can send those links out. But I'll send you the links out for all of them, like 300 and 400 you actually have to sit in a classroom for.
Right.
But the 100 and 700 are the two that are, you know, the basic, and then there's another one, IS-200 as well. And there's an IS-200 for hospitals, and IS-200 for public officials, IS-200 for Public Works, IS-200 for police departments and fire, so there's a bunch of those as well.
Great, thank you. I didn't mean to hijack the plan.
Oh, no, no problem at all, but it was a good question, yes.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Any?
You said it was updated every four years?
It's, the major plan is updated every four years, but almost every year, there's an update with name changes or plan changes and things like that.
Has there been a lot of changes in the last four years?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Other than names?
The biggest thing is updated plans. So, how did they deal with the pandemic? Most of the facilities have done that, and so, like Parkland School District has, their plans went from like 40 pages to 900 pages for each school.
Yeah, I'm aware of their plan.
Yeah, so they're required to have a full-time emergency management coordinator as well, which is Tony Nardaco. So, a lot of change over the last four years. But we're fortunate to have a great staff to help me, because as you know, I'm only a part-time volunteer, and I have a great support staff from all the departments in the township, so they're be commended to help me out. Sometimes I think it's more than a part-time job, but it's, I have a great township staff to help.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Before we go to vote, I do have a question for Solicitor Zader. Jeff Kelly is my husband, and before I proceed with a vote on a matter concerning him, I was just going to ask your legal guidance if there would be any conflict at all for me to be voting on this particular.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. It's a good question. I am perfectly comfortable with your participation in a discussion and in a vote. If there were any financial gain that either your husband Jeff or you might see based upon this, I'd be thinking differently, but that's not the case. So, there's no conflict of interest, and I would just add that emergency management protocol procedure that Jeff's been talking about is one of the more important functions of municipal government, and so I think maximum participation by the Board is a good thing.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no further comment, do I hear a motion to approve, adopt, and place into effect the Emergency Operations Plan, EOP, for South Whitehall Township?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you. A motion carries, 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I think there's only one other volunteer that's on emergency management. Patrick Eisenhardt is our newest volunteer. He's a deputy, and he's going to be charged with getting our CERT team back up and ringing in South Whitehall. Thank you.
Excellent, well, thank you, Jeff, and Patrick, and all of the other volunteers, everyone who was involved in compiling this plan for the township. Appreciate your volunteerism and your help. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have a resolution before us, executing Memorandum of Understanding for the School Resource Officer at Parkland School District, and it will be presented this evening by Chief Dorni.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We're just here tonight. We have updated in works with the Solicitor's Office for the school district, as well as Jennifer Zader out of Solicitor Zader's office, Jennifer Aldifer out of Solicitor Zader's office. This is, yeah, it's been a long day. We're here tonight to propose a resolution to adopt the new and improved Memorandum of Understanding, which addresses many of the items that were not addressed in the previous Memorandum of Understanding. One of those that I think is very important is the initial MOU that we had from 2015 did not indicate any form of compensation whatsoever. It didn't, wasn't addressed at all. This is one of the things that we made sure that, if you see in the agreement, it's the actual first item, that's reimbursement to township by school district for cost of school resource officer. That was not indicated anywhere in the previous agreement. So, we tightened up some of the things that were a little bit weaker in the past, and just updating things with, as other things update with the school district, some of their requirements, some of our requirements, training, things like that, and I think it's a very good product that was collectively agreed upon between the school district and my staff and the Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Chief Dorni.
You are welcome.
Are there any questions from the Board on this agreement? I did have a question, Chief Dorni, regarding certainly the compensation, the first paragraph. Is there a consideration that we should have to list, maybe the, there's nothing spoken here regarding overtime or amount of hours that the school resource officers are committed to working? Is that something that the township should spell out so that it's clear to both parties?
I don't think, because there's no hours depending on vacations, things like that, we don't have a set number of hours that we bill them for. We bill them for the hours worked, and the overtime, I believe, is addressed elsewhere in the document indicating that any overtime is also the responsibility of the school district, as long as they're doing school district business, so.
So, there's not a typical work week? It's not a 40-hour per week?
It typically is, but that does change. So, I wouldn't put a 40-hour work week in here, and then, because over the summertime, the school resource officers aren't in the schools. Though holidays, things like that, if we have training, if we have mandatory training, we'll send them to that. If it's specific to the police department, the school district does not pay for them for that. If it's specific to the school SRO responsibilities, oftentimes, they will pay for them. So, it's kind of a judgment call as to what it is and whether or not they pay. It's usually a conversation between myself and either Tony Nardaco or Superintendent Madsen.
Thank you. One other question I had on page 7 of the document, there's language that speaks that the school resource officer shall be assigned to school district's schools as needed and where needed, and I know Parkland School District encompasses three municipalities, and when I read the document, I questioned if it would be wise to add that our township officers who fulfill the role as a school resource officer, should we include language in here that they would be assigned to schools within our municipality unless potentially called out for emergencies? I know we go outside of our boundaries to help others, but I didn't know, since it was just a vague reference to school district as opposed to...
I don't think it's necessary, because they work for the South Whitehall Township Police Department under my direction, and I would never assign them to another school district, or school outside of the district. It's just not, not what we do. It's referencing only South Whitehall Township, essentially.
And then the, right below that, paragraph 3A, there it does speak that the hours are going to be subject to change as circumstances warrant. Is that at the discretion of the school district, or is that...
The police department. We have ultimate control over the officer. It indicates in here that they're sole employees of the township, and that they follow all guidance of the police department. That means from command staff within the internal, within the police department, so...
So, you're confident that this document keeps the authority for placement of officers with you and the township as opposed to...
I am. Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the Board? Any from the public? Okay, do I have a motion to move forward with a resolution executing a Memorandum of Understanding for the school resource officers at Parkland School District?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I heard Monica. Okay, so, a motion to approve, 5 to 0.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Moving on to Agenda Item C, we have a series of motions on our agenda that have to do with appointing volunteers to South Whitehall Township Boards and Commissions. And the first one is a resolution appointing a volunteer to the South Whitehall Township Vacancy Board. Before we proceed with all of these, I do want to say that the Board received 10 resumes and letters of interest from our community. We're very grateful for all the volunteers who have offered to help our township as we staff our boards and committees that advise us, and I want to thank them all. We had quite a robust group with varied levels of education and experience and desire to serve, and we're very, very grateful for all of them. As we move forward, is there a nomination on the floor from any of the Commissioners to appoint a vacancy board member?
I'll nominate Dave Torrey. Second that.
Good. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of appointing Dave Torrey to the South Whitehall Township Vacancy Board, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, 5 to 0. Thank you. Our next resolution is a resolution reappointing a current Planning Commission member to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. Is there a motion on the floor to nominate a member for this role?
I'd like to nominate Brian Height.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on this nomination?
I would like to raise a discussion, yes.
Of course.
It has nothing to do with the experience qualifications of Brian Height, but more so to lead into what my real question is. I see that the agenda before us this evening is different than the one that was online previously this week, I think as recently as yesterday. So, only one of these motions has the word "reappointing" in them. So, my question, which could be answered after we take a vote on this, is where is the motion to reappoint the other two Planning Commission members whose terms have expired? I have no qualms at all about Brian Height. He's excellent. He's also a member of Lehigh Valley Plan Commission. You can't beat the credentials and his dedication to the township, but I would like to make sure that we have the discussion that I just mentioned after this.
Of course, we absolutely can. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion on this motion?
Yes. I concur with Commissioner Osborne completely. I think we need to have a thorough discussion on the subject that he raised.
And we will do that. Is there any other discussion on this particular appointment? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of reappointing Brian Height to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, 5 to 0. Thank you. So, I will begin the next resolution, and then we can have the discussion that both Commissioners Osborne and Wilk had suggested. Subject, a resolution appointing blank to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. At this point, I will ask if there's any nominations for this position.
Yeah, make a motion to nominate Bill McNair and Alan Tobe, and I'll explain the reasons why in a minute.
Okay, is there a second for those nominations?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Is that for me, or any of us?
I asked if there's any discussion, all of us.
Okay. Okay, here's my thinking. I only have partial information as to why this agenda was structured the way it is, and only some partial information about some surrounding discussions and what appear to be some decisions. Here's my thinking. We are in the third year of the Comprehensive Plan. It's been a long process. The Comprehensive Plan is scheduled to be done in, according to our CD manager, four months, you know, maybe it's six months, but nevertheless, this year. And I believe that we need experienced and knowledgeable people in order to complete that comp plan. So, I'm in favor of all three incumbents, Brian Height, Bill McNair, Alan Tobe, to maintain their positions on the Planning Commission, and I don't know the rules about extensions and all that, but I would say at least until the comp plan is completed. I think that's the advisable, reasonable, prudent thing to do. I did not participate firsthand in all the interviews, however, I did review the video for all the interviews, so I know what was said by these three incumbents, and I know what all the other applicants said. And with all due respect to the other applicants, as Commissioner Kelly said, they have different experiences and education. I don't think they have the knowledge, experience, and on account of that, I don't think they have the competence to complete the comp plan. So, and I could, I could go to each one of them, I would prefer not to do that, but I could go to each one of them and tell you statements that they made, varying degrees of knowledge about comp plan, saldo, ordinances, but largely, there's a lack of knowledge. If we were to make a decision not to renew the three incumbents, then we would wind up with a Planning Commission, I might be forgetting someone, but we'd wind up with a Planning Commission with, I think, three experienced Planning Commission members and three completely inexperienced Planning Commission members. And although they've got other, other knowledge and experience, but it's not South Whitehall, it's not comp plan, it's not saldo, it's just not ordinances, I think we need an experienced Planning Commission, and not one that's got half experienced and half completely inexperienced in the last four to six months of our effort to complete the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other...
Commissioner Kelly, thank you. I agree with what Commissioner Wolf just said. I'll add a little bit of information without duplicating what was said. Alan Tobe and Bill McNair, between them, have over 50 years' experience on the Planning Commission. They have been through the 2000, they were helpful in developing the 2009 Comprehensive Plan, and here they both are, what is now 13 years later, still interested in the job, still very willing to contribute their experience. They want to do this. The township actually needs this. I can't imagine that we're going to have a Planning Commission that has three new members when we're in the middle of the comp plan, which we have all said is a critical piece for us to get right. We need them on this commission. If this Board would like to entertain perhaps replacing them after the comp plan is complete, I think that's another discussion, and it's consistent with my comments in the last meeting as far as we need to keep the experience on this comp plan. I don't think, I was in the interviews, the first set of interviews, the candidates who offered their time, every single one of them has something valuable that they can offer, but that will be offered and gained over time. I don't think any one of them, I don't think it was advertised this way, I don't think that they understood it this way, because it wasn't explained to them when I was in the room, that there was more than one opening. These were the number of candidates who were applying for the one. one opening. These were the number of candidates who were applying for the one opening that was advertised, and that was advertised because of an unexpired term of a former Planning Commission member. So, I have other things that I can say, but I will yield the floor to other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne.
I agree with Commissioner Wilk totally, that the comp plan does need experience and knowledge. I don't think we can argue with that, and I think we see that with Greg Adams and Dave Manhart, as leading the comp plan, you know, employees of South Whitehall Township. And that's where the experience and knowledge, I think, has come in. As far as Bill McNair and Alan Tope, yes, they were involved with the 2009 plan, and all I can say is, look where that's gotten us. I knocked on four thousand doors to get to be Commissioner in South Whitehall Township, and the one complaint I heard was about the ridge farms, i.e., coming out of the 2009. I heard that so many times. In the one interview, it was Bill McNair who said it, and you said you listened to it, Mike, he made a comment that obviously things changed within the township on the election, and that's what the three new Commissioners onboard, Monica Hodges, Brad Osborne, and myself. So, therefore, when he made that comment, I believed it was time at that point to reappoint Brian, who has a tremendous passion, which we've already done, and said to myself, if he feels that way, that the Commissioners were replaced, I feel that is the time to replace him on the Planning Commission. And so, that's why I would not support both Bill or Al.
Thank you for your comments. I have a comment as well. I currently serve as a Planning Commission member and have for the last three and a half years, and I can concur with some of your comments. Excuse me, as a member of that committee, we have been given very clear and complete direction when we go to our meetings for the comp plan. We are provided with survey details and outlines, and are guided step by step through our Community Development Department to Greg Adams and staff, to Dave Manhart. I am confident that the nominees with the experience and education that they have will provide a great deal of input and will help in this process. I think we're in very good hands with our Community Development Department, who really are spearheading this for us and are guiding the Planning Commission. So, I am very thankful for all the guidance that you've given us, and I'm confident that we can be very successful with four remaining Planning Commission members and adding three new ones on. Their ability to bring fresh ideas and new vision as we complete this comp plan, I think, is actually a bonus. But those are my thoughts. Did Commissioner Hodges have anything to say before we move on? I don't want to.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay. This decision was not an easy one. It's a very difficult one, and I'm very grateful to Mr. Tope and Mr. McNair for the years of service that they gave. We interviewed, what, nine people for this position? And I simply want to choose the ones that will best carry out the best vision that the voters had and have had since 2019. It's not for me. It's not my desire. I'm speaking on behalf of what the citizens want and the citizens' vision. So, someone very wise said to me, "Change in government is healthy." I believe it was you, Commissioner Osborne, and although it's not easy, I do believe we have enough experience on the Planning Commission and on our community development to guide us forward. Guess you could say the same thing about us having a new board, inexperienced, but we work hard. We follow those who are leading, follow those who have experience, and we go forward, and we listen to our residents. I can't talk anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board?
Of course. I'd like to respond to the comment that Commissioner Kennedy made. I was also part of the 2009 Comprehensive Plan. I was the Chair of the Board at the time, so I know very well that process. And I can tell you, at no time did I ever consider the Planning Commission the responsible body to enact the Comprehensive Plan. That always rests with the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners and the staff. So, it is not Alan Tope's or Bill McNair's or anyone else's fault if the 2009 aspects of it, Comprehensive Plan, were not enforced, and they were not. They were not followed through. It's one of the improvements we can make in this process. But I would also like to say this. To make a decision based on one comment or two comments in an interview, let me give everyone a little bit more perspective. A meeting or two ago, I forget which one it was, but Bill McNair, who is the Chair of the Planning Commission, came and gave an annual report to this board, and I looked over that annual report, and if I remember correctly, there were twenty-seven items in that report. Twenty-six of those items in that report, which covered the calendar year 2021, twenty-six of them required a decision. Twenty-four out of the twenty-six decisions made by the Planning Commission were unanimous, unanimous. So, any thought that these two gentlemen are not doing their job properly or they want, someone wants them to be doing it differently, you can say that about every Planning Commissioner in twenty-four of twenty-six cases. That's over ninety percent of the time. The other two cases, there was one Planning Commission member who dissented. That happened twice. I don't know if it's the same Planning Commissioner or not. It doesn't matter. My point is this. These gentlemen are in the fold of every other Planning Commission member there, and in addition to... I'll stop there. This should not be an argument about their qualifications and how they are not following through on their responsibilities. How they answer a certain question in an interview? I don't know. That's what we hear. Maybe a development of that question and answer would have been more certain, more appropriate, but that's my position. I also have more to say before we're done with this discussion.
Thank you.
I have some additional comments. This goes to two subjects raised by two other Commissioners, which is one had to do with the need for change, and the other had to do with qualifications. Alan Tope made comments in the interview, which are public, so I guess it's okay to say what his comments are, and his comments are exactly my viewpoint or comments that I would make. And they are. When asked about his vision for South Whitehall Township, he said he was previously pro-growth. It was in vogue to be pro-growth back in 2009, because we had no growth and we needed to stimulate it. But now, he favors less growth. He doesn't want to discourage development, but we need some control around development. He said, like a former South Whitehall Township Commissioner said, "We've overdone it with ridge farms. Ridge farms should not be duplicated." Regarding land preservation, we need open space, and the comp plan, as we all know, needs to set up the zoning changes to achieve that. And while doing all of that, we need to always respect property owners' rights, you know, because they have the right to develop their land. Those were Alan Tope's comments. That's why I think he has the experience we need. He has the right viewpoint that is aligned with me as a Commissioner, and I believe is aligned with all of our citizens. Now, I'd like to share just a few comments by other applicants, you know, without mentioning their name. One applicant said, "I have no opinion about the comp plan." I reached a conclusion that they weren't informed or may not even really know what a comp plan is. Another candidate, when asked about the comp plan, gave no answer, just no answer whatsoever. They indicated they didn't have a great understanding about the saldo or what it is. Made a comment that they don't fully understand how to follow an ordinance versus use their opinion, their open-ended opinion, as opposed to following an ordinance. These are comments, I believe, that don't only indicate a lack of experience, actually disqualify them from coming on to the Planning Commission. Another candidate said they don't recognize that the saldo is an ordinance, and a waiver is an interpretation. So, my translation of that was, saldo, don't think it's an ordinance, doesn't need to be followed. Waivers are subject to interpretation. Others had too narrow experience, you know, they're high expertise in certain areas but too narrow experience. I mean, didn't have broad enough experience. Only one candidate, who I think is qualified, and in a minute, I'll say, I think that person's qualified to backfill Matt Molequeen's position, but let me hold that aside for the moment until we see where this settles regarding the three incumbents.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add to the commentary. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. One is the process. I mentioned that yesterday, there was a different agenda that was posted and available to the public. Today, that agenda was changed, and there are now items on this agenda related to the topic that we're talking about. So, last meeting, we talked about how does a Commissioner who had asked for a motion to be put on the agenda a week ahead of time, how that didn't get on. The answer was, it needs to be discussed in a meeting, and then perhaps it could go on the next meeting's agenda. These appeared. I'm going to stop and ask, how did these get on here? This doesn't seem to be consistent with what we talked about in our very last meeting. How did it happen? Who decided that these were going on here? We wouldn't be having this discussion tonight if these weren't on here, and they weren't yesterday. Correct me if I'm wrong, but please answer if I'm right.
Well, I'll ask Tracy to confirm. The agenda was, the draft was switched to the confirmed agenda yesterday afternoon, so there were no changes made to the agenda today. Okay, thank you.
No changes today, no.
Thank you.
We have to do, I think, twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I saw it today. This was not the agenda that was originally posted. Am I correct on that? Thank you.
Because the original agenda is always the draft.
When it's no longer a draft, you'll see that I removed the word "draft."
Okay.
Which is twenty-four hours before the meeting.
So, it defaults to my second question. How did it get on here?
Because the board made a decision a couple of meetings ago to hold interviews for current Planning Commission members who had expired terms.
That's, I understand that.
So...
How did these resolutions specifically get on this agenda when they were not on the draft? Who requested it?
They were a product of the interviews that the board held for Planning Commission positions.
Who made that decision?
We did as a board.
Whose "we"?
The board.
I was not part of it. I was not asked. I was not part of it.
We agreed in a public meeting to hold interviews for the expired terms, and an additional applicant had also sent in a resume, so we ended up interviewing four people.
My question is this.
We didn't interview nine people to fill one role.
Why is there not two resolutions, three actually, we already voted on one, two other resolutions reappointing the current ones with expired terms, and vote that up or vote that down? This leads, I have another interesting fact to tell you when we're done with this discussion. This leads me to believe that a decision has been made because the word "reappointment" doesn't appear three times. Why not?
Because there was, I personally, as the Board President, made phone calls to the board to get a census, took a poll to see who each member was leaning towards for the positions. I called every single one of you, which is not uncommon, and determined that there was not full support to reappoint.
I'd like to address that subject. I don't think that's a proper form of government. I don't think it's transparent government, and I'd like to explain why.
May I just ask Solicitor Zader, in keeping with the Sunshine Act, is one member of the board permitted to discuss a topic with another member of the board as long as it's only two Commissioners?
I don't have an issue with that. I have an issue with your, wait, I'll paraphrase your words. Your straw poll, your private straw poll, your private vote-getting, which leads to private decisions instead of having a proper public discussion. Let me start.
Well, we are having a public discussion.
I prepared some comments. Let me continue, please.
But I'd like to address what you just said. We are having a very public discussion right now and have for the last twenty minutes.
Yes, we are now, right, but decisions were made to change the agenda. And I said, this is not, this is not one of these simple agenda things that we've talked about. This goes to the substantive issue that Commissioner Osborne has described. There's one resolution to reappoint. There's three resolutions to not reappoint, but appoint new people.
Just to clarify.
I need to...
Just one moment. Each resolution, any, there are no names on this agenda. They are open to nominations from the board, a second discussion, and then votes.
I know. We'll continue. We'll continue. So, I want to start from a different vantage point and work our way down. I believe we have a transparency issue in this township and with this board. We all five pledged that we would provide transparent government, and that's what I stand for. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying, and that's what I intend to provide our citizens, all right? That's why I'm talking. We need to have open discussion at public meetings and make decisions via votes at public meetings. This BOC needs to avoid making decisions in private, which are de facto private votes, instead of having open discussion, making decisions via votes at public meetings. And I concur with Commissioner Osborne's observation. Part of it's due to the way this agenda is constructed, and part of it is due to some other information, which we haven't discussed here yet. It appears as if a decision was made to renew Brian Height and not renew Bill McNair and Alan Tope on the Planning Commission before this BOC had any discussion on this subject in public or made a decision via a vote in public. We need transparent government. We need to conduct our township business here, on this desk, in front of everybody, and a practice that seems to be adopted where that's not being done, but in advance, we have private discussion, straw poll votes, maybe some deliberations in private. I don't think, that's definitely not transparent, and I don't think that's an appropriate form of government that we should provide to our citizens. and I don't think that's an appropriate form of government that we should provide to our citizens.
And it gets worse. You know, if this isn't transparent, I don't know what is. We're discussing it, we're public, we're virtual, and we're going to vote on it. So no decision had been made prior to this evening.
Okay.
I was called by the president of the board and asking, she asked me who I would consider. I gave her my names. Okay, Commissioner Kennedy- And that was, I didn't vote on it, I just gave her names. Commissioner Kennedy, I, I think that's fair. I think that's good. What, what is not good is what I'm going to share now. And Commissioner Kennedy, you may not be aware of this, since you kind of said no decision's been made. Bill McNair and Alan Tope have been told, "You will not be reappointed." That's a decision that was conveyed to them. That's a decision that we did not make.
That is absolutely correct, because I had polled the board, and as a courtesy to them, I didn't want them to show up at this meeting tonight thinking that they would be appointed. I was letting them know, based on the polling that I had done with the board, that was the decision of-
Commissioner Kelly, this board did not make a decision. This board makes a decision in public session-
The polling.
By votes with your names attached, after discussion, after public input. We don't make decisions in the background. I cannot accept that, and I will not. Now, this evening, or ever.
I, I don't accept it, I don't accept it either. It's not transparent. I'm trying awfully hard to, to say, I don't even know if it's ethical. We, we stand for transparency. We, we all ran on transparency. We all have campaign flyers that say we're going to be completely open and transparent. That means we conduct our government business here at the public meeting. And, and this, this practice that has developed of individual conversations, yes, permitted by law, yes, ethical, but when that, when that goes past that point into straw poll voting and decisions that are made without a full discussion across this, this board, to the point where our, our board president informs two people they're, they're not going to be renewed before we've even talked about it. I haven't had a single conversation with Commissioner Kennedy on this subject. He, he's, he's done the interviews, he's reached his conclusions. He's probably spoken with a couple other commissioners here, and yeah, they're like-minded, perhaps. He hasn't had the opportunity to hear my viewpoint, what I said earlier tonight. I haven't had the opportunity to explain my viewpoint. But, but for lack of that, there's been a private decision to the point where that decision's been communicated to, to, to two people who are applicants for, for these roles. I don't think that, that is transparent. I don't think it's good government. And, okay, we're reviewing what's, what's happened here tonight. I strongly recommend that this practice must stop, and we must change what's been happening and do everything openly in public.
I would like to make one last comment unless there's another one that I feel I need to respond to. We can talk about the ethics, we can talk about the process. I have difficulties with both of them. But here is something that I really, I'm embarrassed for South Whitehall. I'm embarrassed for them this evening. This is treatment of people. This isn't, this isn't some planning commission with some responsibilities and nobody is associated with that. These are two gentlemen who have given up years and hours of their time, and this is the way we treat them? Not in my book. I, I can accept a decision where they are not reappointed, that's not what I'm saying. This, the way this was done, is not the way for us to conduct our business. It's not treating people the way they should be treated.
Is there any other discussion? Any board, I'm sorry, public comment?
Calling for the vote.
Yes, hearing and seeing none. We have a motion on the floor to reappoint Alan Tope and Bill McNair to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay.
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 Motion does not carry. Moving on to the next resolution, we have another position to fill. We have a resolution to appoint a volunteer to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. Is there a nomination to fill this position?
I make a nomination to appoint Trevor Dombach.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I will not be voting in favor of Trevor, and my reason is this. I think he is one of the candidates that I listen to, who would do well on the Planning Commission. Well, let me, I'm sorry, let me back up. I jumped to conclusions, I'm sorry. For what position is this nomination for? Is this for the unexpired term of Matt Mulqueen?
Yeah, good clarification.
I thought all, all terms were expired. No, this is- I mean, I'm sorry. This is unexpired. Matt Mulqueen's, it's unexpired.
Yeah, yeah.
He resigned.
So, okay, so clarification. There's one position to complete the term of Matt Mulqueen, and I'd like to clarify, if I may. I nominate Trevor Dombach for that position.
I'll second that.
Not, not, not the others.
Okay, I think we need some discussion on this. The wording on the resolutions for appointment to the Planning Commission say that they are appointed for a term of, I believe it's four years, or until replaced. So I guess I would ask Attorney Zader, if someone resigns, the wording does state that it is until replaced, or, or until a successor is chosen. So are we in fact filling out an expired term? I've not seen that language.
In the case of Mr. Mulqueen, I believe you would be filling an unexpired term. And as with all positions on the Planning Commission, it would continue not to the end of that four-year term only, but until replaced. But presumptively, it would conclude at the end of Mr. Mulqueen's term. And then, at that point, it's up to the board to decide whether to replace or allow it to continue or to reappoint.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Solicitor Zader, and the reason for that is the, the terms on any board, in this case, the Planning Commission, are staggered, and they're staggered on purpose so that we don't have what we have, in this case, three supposed vacancies on a board of seven. But anyway, thank you for the clarification, Zader, and I believe that's, that's why I wanted to make the clarification.
Is there any further discussion?
So with all that, can we, can we clarify that this, what we're talking about right now is the Mulqueen position?
That is the motion you made.
And that's my motion, second.
Any other discussion from the public?
I, I have some comments. I think Trevor Dombach is the most qualified, based on his profession and his education. He's a geotechnical and environmental engineer. He's familiar with ordinances. He's completed his MBA. He wants to apply his engineering background. He's aware of the comp plan, and, and he advocates that, that it be updated. He's aware about the most recent property developments and the, the proposed, although only sketch planned, development for the Jerris property. He's attended meetings virtually. He's enrolled in a real estate development course, which includes managing, managing a real estate development project. He said he'll follow the ordinances and listen to public feedback, and we always need to consider safety. He's aligned with all my thoughts. I think he's highly qualified for those reasons.
Any other discussion by the board? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of appointing Trevor Dombach to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission for the expired term, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And Trevor, welcome to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission if you're on the call.
Just for clarification, was that for the expired term or the unexpired term?
Unexpired term of Matt Mulqueen.
Term of Matt Mulqueen, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Moving on, we have another resolution to appoint a volunteer to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. Do I have a nomination from the board?
I'm, I nominate Andy Flag.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any board discussion?
Commissioner Kelly?
Of course.
I think Mr. Flag is, is in the audience, am I right? No?
Didn't see him.
Sorry. I am not, although I believe Mr. Flag was one of the candidates who I heard speak, and I think he would do well on the Planning Commission, certainly in my view. However, I'm not going to vote for his appointment to the Planning Commission because I think that this position and the next position that we're going to talk about should not even exist.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I concur with Commissioner Osborne completely. We should have voted in the other two incumbents, and-
I'm going to interrupt for a second. We should have taken a vote. We haven't taken a vote.
On the other two incumbents?
Yeah, before it was communicated to them, I'm sorry, interrupted.
Okay. I know Andy Flag through three interviews over the past two years. I'm impressed with his background and capabilities. I think it would be best if he would join the alternate zoning hearing board position, as opposed to here.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comments? We have a motion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of appointing Andy Flag to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 All, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two. Andy, if you're on the call, welcome to the South Whitehall Township Planning-
Thank you, everybody. I hope I can live up to your expectations.
Thank you. I have every confidence that you will. Thank you. And we have one other resolution, appointing a volunteer to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. Do I hear a nomination for this position?
I'd like to nominate Tim Dugan.
I will second that motion. Is there any board discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Kelly, I have the same position that I had for Mr. Flag, which I think he will do well on the Planning Commission. However, I think that the decision to put this on the agenda before a vote was taken in public for the two gentlemen with expired terms, this position would not exist except for the decision that was made outside of this board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board discussion?
Yes, I concur with the statement made by Commissioner Osborne. And, and here, I, I recognize that Mr. Dugan has good, you know, some good experience. But, but here again, the, the two incumbents have a vast amount of knowledge and experience. And, and I would say Mr. Dugan doesn't have enough experience to join the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Anything from the public? I'm going to call for the vote. We have a motion on the floor to appoint Tim Dugan to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All, any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to two. Tim, if you're on the call, and welcome to the South Whitehall Township Planning Commission. And we have one other motion to appoint to one of our boards. We have a resolution appointing a volunteer as an alternate member to the South Whitehall Township Zoning Hearing Board. Do I hear a motion? A nomination, I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Dennis Toomey.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion from the board? Anything from the public? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of appointing Dennis Toomey as an alternate member of the South Whitehall Township Zoning Hearing Board, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Dennis, if you're on the call, welcome as a member of the South Whitehall Township Zoning Hearing Board. That is all we have for resolutions tonight. Moving on to motions, thank you all for your patience. We have a motion to appoint a commissioner to the South Whitehall Township Land Preservation Committee, which is a subcommittee of this board. This is a continuation from our last meeting where a vote was taken to appoint Commissioner Wolke to the Land Preservation Committee, and we need to fill a, one more position on this. Is there a nomination to appoint a commissioner to this board?
I nominate Commissioner Osborne.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. If appointed, I'd be very appreciative. I will work hard. I will also make sure that this committee mission is developed and communicated, and we act on it quickly. We have a golden opportunity here in South Whitehall. And once we are able to respect the rights of landowners and developers, work with them in a cooperative means, we can do a lot here. And I do think that we can gain that cooperation. This is a step in that, in this direction. This is a serious committee, if formed, by this board, and it indicates publicly that we want this initiative moving forward. So, thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
You're very welcome. Any other board discussion? Anything from the public? We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of appointing Commissioner Brad Osborne to the South Whitehall Township Land Preservation Committee, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Our next motion is a motion requesting permission to extend the current road building's material contract, and that will be presented by Herb Bender. Good evening, Herb.
Good evening, Commissioners. On behalf of South Whitehall Township, Public Works and the Purchasing Department are hereby requesting permission to extend the New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company's contract for an additional one year. With the rising oil and fuel prices, we feel the extension would be in the best interest of the township as the vendor has agreed to hold the same pricing for another year.
Very good, thank you. Yes, that's excellent news. I know that prices are going up, and it's great to hear that this company is willing to do that for us, so.
And this is our last one-year extension on the, that we can take on this contract. So next year, we have no choice but to go out the bit.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this motion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to request permission to extend the current road building's material contract, please, please signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Hodges?
Oh, I did say aye.
Aye, very good. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Don't go anywhere, though. The next motion will be explained by Herb as well. We have a motion before us to approve a street moratorium exemption request for Dorney Park Road.
Yes, PJ Dix is requesting that the moratorium on Dorney Park Road be lifted. They need to run water lines and stormwater pipes across Dorney Park Road. This is the utility work for Cedar Brook Nursing Home. PJ Dix has agreed to mill and overlay the full width of the road from the first trench to the last trench. Public Works is also requesting that the $1,000 fee be waived since they have agreed to mill and overlay the whole area.
Thank you. Typically, we would require only half of the road to be repaired when there's an opening for-
Well, it all, it all depends if they cross the center line or not, which, this one, they have no choice but to cross the center line, so they do, they would be required to do a full mill and overlay.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, just one question.
Commissioner Osborne?
Herb, how long is this, on this particular road, the moratorium been in place?
This road, if I'm not mistaken, was done in 2019. So there, if I'm not mistaken, there's about two more years left on it. So there, if I'm not mistaken, there's about two more years left on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's about two years. Yeah, it's a five-year moratorium.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other board comment or discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving a street moratorium exemption request for Dorney Park Road, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And, there, right there. We have Agenda Item D, a motion to proceed with advertising of a bid regarding the Public Works pole barn project.
Southway Hall Township Public Works Department is respectfully requesting permission to advertise a bid for a pole barn to the rear of the Public Works garage. The pole barn will be used to park trucks and equipment to keep them out of the elements, which will prolong the life of the fleet. The size of the pole barn will be 115 feet long by 80 feet wide. And this will, it is with the ARPA funds that this was put into the budget for $300,000.
Very good, thank you. Where is this pole barn going to be located?
Right out back of Public Works. If you go down there, we have a, when I first got here, we had an area that was grass, which we dug out, put concrete blocks in, built it where we park trucks now. They are $200,000 trucks. That is left out in all the elements, so we are trying to build behind that area, right? It's behind the block wall and in between the salt shed. So this way, if there is a snowstorm, we get called in in the middle of the night, we can pull these trucks right out, load them, and off they go.
Excellent. And does this bid, will it include a concrete pad for the pole barn?
Yes, this will include the concrete pad reinforced, the pole barn itself. We are going to run the electric in-house. I am working with UGI to get the gas extended from the campus renovation, run down to the pole barn. They are agreeing to almost do it for free for us. And then we will have to go out for one more bid after this to put the heating aspect of it into the building.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Anything from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of proceeding with the advertising of bid regarding the Public Works Pole Barn Project, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And again, for Herb, we have a motion to proceed with advertising of bid regarding the Bridgeview Terrace Phase Two Water Main Replacement Project.
Yes, Southway Hall Township Public Works Department is respectfully requesting permission to advertise the bid for the Bridgeview Terrace Phase Two. This project is to replace aging water main. The streets to get new water main are Rose Lane, Rachel Lane, Astor Drive, and Elias Court. You do see on the memo Lime Kiln Road is on there is because we have to dig into that to make the tie-in to put the new main in. This is budgeted in the capital account in the water for $400,000 and also in the ARPA funds for $300,000.
Excellent, thank you.
And just so you know, we are gonna, when we put this bid out, we are bidding it as eight-inch, but we also included an alternate bid of six-inch to see what the big price difference would be from eight-inch main to six-inch.
Very good, thank you. Is the Phase One project done?
They have just went in and restored yards. Some of it has settled, so they are coming back to do that. The whole water line systems and service lines are all connected, so they are operating off the new main now. And they just have to do the blacktop work then, yeah, also.
Very good, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of proceeding with advertising a bid regarding Bridgeview Terrace Phase Two Water Main Project, Replacement Project, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Herb, we appreciate that. Moving on on the agenda, we are at the Correspondence and Information Items section, and I'm going to ask Randy if he would review our board vacancies.
Sure, we have a couple remaining board vacancies. We have an alternate vacancy position for the Civil Service Commission, one vacancy on our Green Advisory Council, two vacancies in our Landscape Shade Tree Commission, and one vacancy remaining on our Parks and Recreation Board. We do have some upcoming meetings and events I'll briefly touch on as well. Tomorrow, Thursday, April 21st, we'll have our next Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. Saturday, April 23rd, we'll have an Earth Day cleanup in Cover Bridge Park and Fernwood Park. That'll be held from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. If you're interested in volunteering, please register through our website and our Parks and Rec Manager, Mike Cookett. On Monday, April 25th, we'll have our next Landscape and Shade Tree Commission meeting at 10:00 AM. Wednesday, April 27th, we'll have our next zoning hearing board meeting at 7:00 PM. Thursday, April 28th, will be our next, our first actual public meeting for our Parks Recreation Open Spaces and Trails Project, or also titled Prot Plan. That'll be here in the municipal building at 7:00 PM. We encourage all residents to please come out to provide input for this very important plan that the township's currently working on. On Saturday, April 30th, we'll have our 22nd Annual National Drug Takeback Day. That will be also held here at the Township Building from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And on Monday, May 2nd, we'll have our next Public Safety Commission meeting at 7:00 PM.
Very good, thank you, Randy. I would just like to add, I know this board, we've talked about a little bit, but not officially, our Environmental Advisory Board has been stagnant for many years. There are two members on the board who have been members for a long time. I didn't, I wanted to bring that up for discussion to see if the board would like to have discussion on restarting that committee. Its mission, its purpose is to review plans as part of the planning process from an environmental standpoint. So I just want to bring that up tonight and see if there was any desire of the board to look at moving forward with beginning to staff that board.
My general comment is, need more information. It was discussed sort of briefly at the workshop. I would just think it's advisable, practical. Could somebody send, like, documentation on, does it have an established purpose? What's its history? Send that out to the board so we can consider it. Otherwise, I don't, I don't have any comments because I don't know anything.
Randy, is that something that...
Yeah, I'm going to look for the bylaws, and then I can circulate that to the board.
Okay. So that's something maybe we could add to discussion or old business at our next meeting. We can have an opportunity to review the bylaws and the history and...
Sure, so you went to Environmental Advisory Council, I believe it is?
It's EAC.
EAC. We'll add that under Direction and Discussion for the next meeting.
If the board's in agreement, I think that's a good idea. Okay. Looks like everybody's nodding. Yes, very good. Moving on to old business. Randy, if you would go through our old business tonight.
Sure.
Sorry, Where's Dam?
Yep, for Where's Dam, a real brief update. We're currently working with Michael Baker. The board approved their professional service at our last meeting, and I've met with them since then. We're kind of getting close to finalizing the bid schedule, having a pre-bid meeting, pre-construction meeting, when the bids will, will come in, one will open them, and then one will seek permission to award a bid. So we're working through those details right now, those dates and those timeframes. My hope is to be on the May 4th agenda with a motion to proceed with advertising this bid, but that's where we currently stand right now with this, trying to fine-tune the details, so I'd bring back the full package for the board.
Great, is there a rough timeline with, if it were to go out to bid on the 4th of May, realistically, does it take 30 days or...
Yeah, it probably won't go out on the 4th of May. It'll probably go out that following Monday, whatever that might be, the 9th, I think it might be. So it'll probably be advertised starting then. The bid will likely be open for 30 days, and then we'll probably take a week or so to review, check references of those contractors, and then come back to the board, probably late June, I would think, sometime around that timeframe. Maybe second meeting in June?
Second meeting in June, we could be approving, and then can work just begin shortly after that, then...
It will depend on the contractor's schedule and, yeah, and the guidance we get from, whether, obviously, the guidance we get from our engineers and...
Excellent.
All that will be worked out, though.
Excellent, great, thank you. And we have our comp plan update.
Yep. Our Director of Community Development's not here this evening, but he did provide a brief update, so I'll just read through this real quick. The Planning Commission BOC Workshop was held on April 12th, where we reviewed updated overall goals and strategies, reviewed our resource protection goals, strategies, and implementation, and recording and presentation posted to the Calendar Events page and Comp Plan Workshops page under the Community Development page. They're currently developing a draft comprehensive plan page to document and share progress, and developing comment forums to receive comments related to our goals and strategies. The next Joint Planning Commission and BOC Workshop meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00 PM. All encouraged, please attend. Well, at that meeting, we will review the resource protection goals, strategies, and implementation, and start to discuss next steps for the topic of community utilities.
Excellent, and I will echo your invitation under Meetings to encourage the public to attend. I know there's been an awful lot of interest in certain developments around town and an opportunity to be part of adding your input as a citizen as we move forward with the comprehensive plan. We do invite and encourage the community to attend, whether it's in person or virtually. Go to our website for details on attendance. Thank you. And last but not least, Jordan Creek Greenway.
I do have some very exciting news. I think I emailed the board this afternoon, but the township did apply for a TASCIS grant, which is a PennDOT grant that gets awarded through LVPC, our local MPC, and as well as the state. This was a PennDOT grant that the township was awarded in the amount of $1 million to build the Jordan Creek Greenway from Ware Mill Road all the way down through Cover Bridge Park to Lap Road, so connecting the two covered bridges on the north side of the stream and to the existing trail that was just built a few years ago. So that's a very exciting opportunity. We're going to take a look at the overall project again here to see if there's any additional needs that have changed since this grant application's been put in, and if there are, we'll certainly seek other grant opportunities out there that may be required for any additional costs associated with this project. But overall, a very exciting time for the township. This is a very good grant, although I can't really consider it a grant because it's more of a funding stream, which is pretty unique. There's actually no match required for this, so. It is a 100% award. They actually gave us a little bit more than we asked for. I think we asked for $972,000, if I have that off the top of my head. We were awarded an even $1 million, so we have a little flexibility in there. Very great grant opportunity. We did receive a very similar one for the trail we just built across River Road connecting to 309. So I'm very familiar with the process. They're PennDOT's ECMS system. Confident we can get this moving forward here. Very, very good timeframe, so.
Excellent, thank you for sharing that. That's very good news. I want to thank you and any other staff members who were involved in applying for...
Mike Cookett was also instrumental in it.
Yeah, please pass along our, thank you for all of that, and looking forward to getting this project started. All right, moving on to Direction and Discussion, you will see on our agenda, there is an item, Fund Balance Policy. We are going to table that particular motion tonight due to an in lieu of a staff member.
Yeah, we'll replace that on the May 4th agenda.
Okay, so that particular item will be placed on the May agenda for discussion of the board. Are there any comments or questions on that or other discussion items? Go ahead, Commissioner Wolk.
I have something, but first, do you want to give a small update on our Township Manager search? Just a work in progress.
Sure, I can do that. So the board is continuing our management search. We have held interviews this week and have another round of interviews scheduled at the end of the week, and hopefully we'll have another update at our next meeting, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to give some positive feedback to Randy Cope. I meant to give this at the last meeting, when it would have been a little more timely, but, you know, I was virtual and nobody could hear me, so. Anyway, Randy, I'd like to thank you for the outstanding job that you've done during the last seven months as our interim Township Manager. And I'd especially like to publicly congratulate and applaud you for the email that you sent to the board last month regarding effective communications. You outlined certain measures that the BOC and you need to take to improve our communications between the board and Township Manager and the staff. In my opinion, in doing so, you demonstrated tremendous leadership, competence, and some very mature experience in identifying this improvement opportunity and sharing your recommendation with the board. And your email went beyond effective communications. You established guidance on how the board can best fulfill its legislative role while also allowing you as the interim Township Manager and the staff to perform your administrative jobs. And in so doing, I think you set the stage. I think you defined the communications that we need going forward between the board and the future Township Manager, which will make our government effective. So, once again, I thank you for that, and overall, for a job that's extremely well done.
Commissioner Wolk, thank you very much for those comments. Much appreciated.
I would concur. Very well said, thank you. We do appreciate, Randy, your leadership and your help these last several months. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, thank you, President Kelly. Very brief, I just wanted to say I will give the board a very well-deserved break from me. I won't be at the next meeting, and I appreciate you tolerating me this meeting.
Thank you.
I'll still be here.
I had a quick discussion item for the board at our last meeting. We, we used to, practice was monthly, we would have our department heads give updates to the board publicly, and this board had discussion and decided that we would try to do a quarterly report so that we could just hear once every quarter from our department heads, and I think it went very well. I don't know what the rest of the board thought, but I thought it went very well, it was very helpful. But I did want to ask for some discussion, whether or not the board would feel it would be helpful to have each department head maybe attach a memo from their department. A lot of information was given, a lot of figures and stats, and it was hard for me to keep up writing my notes. I didn't know if that would be something that would be helpful to the board, to have a short memo of pertinent facts that we could review, or if you would prefer to leave it as it is, where they just come forth and give an oral report of their department. Any thoughts on that?
My thoughts is let them do it orally. I don't need to read any more stuff.
I, I agree with Commissioner Kennedy. I think if there's notes, bullet point notes or whatever, that the department head wants to share that they're speaking from, you know, I'm okay with that, but...
He's going to put them in his report.
Yeah.
I think I concur with the other two Commissioners.
Okay, very good. I don't want to leave out Commissioner Hodges. I know she's not feeling well, but does she have anything to add?
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. She's about done. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13, courtesy of the floors or anyone from the public. Sure, come on forward, sir.
Dean, are there any graphs in there? Okay.
Browning, 2432, was to offer a belated congratulations to those who won the ballot. But based on the earlier congratulations, I voted for each one of you on the board, as to the majority of the votes of the South Wayhall Township, with the expectation that the township operated and governed. Easy to see, after years of not having representative representatives... I quick review of pension plan. Start with the basic to me, the overall first position. Property taxes that we, South Wayhall Township, pay, expected to be a bunch of interest from... Be just a little bit less than $7 million. I listened to all of these. According to the last financial statement that was printed, and I give you 20, done. Unfunded pension liability has a little bit less than $8.2 million. That equals 117% of this collected property taxes. In other words, if we use that tonight, we need to settle up our pension plan, one of us would have to write a check, not only the amount of the property tax bill. Go through and look at the financial statements, one of the things that I... Look at, look at the assumed rate of return reported in the financial statements. 7.8%. I best estimate going through, weighted average, that is reported as the real...
That are listed on Page Five range from anywhere from 3.7% to 5.7%. Reported real rate of return, less than the rate of return that is assumed in calculating the pension liability. To me, that just doesn't quite compute. Particularly if you go through and consider that if the actual rate of return was 4.88%, which is the middle range of the reported real rate of return, that for every 1% decrease from the 7.88% that's reported, the unfunded liability goes up $4.8 million. So if you assume a middle range of 4.88% versus the assumed rate of return in the calculation of 7.88%, that means that our unfunded liability could be as much as $14.5 million higher, or a total of 22, almost $23 million. That, to me, is a huge number and worth looking at. That's almost three, more than three times what we pay every year in property taxes. I'm not bringing that forward doom and gloom. Again, go back, I am congratulating you for adding two board members to the pension board, but my request would be that you would take a look at these things, and I have some suggestions for additional steps. Number one, I think it would be prudent for you to publish your investment policy. I don't know what it is, I can't find it looking at the statements. I would like a detail of your asset allocation categories. Again, that's not readily available. I'd like to know what the portfolio limits are within those asset allocation categories, and Commissioner Osborne knows what I'm talking about from his time on the Lehigh County Board of Commissioners, where he was on the pension board, and knows all of these details. And again, I'm not, I'm saying, as you're added to this, I'm hoping that these are the additional changes that are brought forward, bearing in mind that you have many, many other things that need to be cleaned up. Another item that I've listed is, to me, is just a basic. If you ask me, and I can't find it any place in the literature, who's the pension fund manager? How long have they been there? What are our actual rates of return by asset category? And is it time for us to look out and put out, consider a bid for either to retain that pension fund manager or to hire someone new? And again, I want to congratulate all of you that have been elected, both in 2021 and 2019. I voted for all of you with the expectation that you would be making changes. You're making progress, I appreciate that, and I hope you would take this into consideration and add it to the list of many, many things that need to be cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
I have a brief comment. Our Finance Director's not here tonight. I'm aware that, and he's reported at the last meeting, he's updating, he's identified and he's updating many policies. Don't know if the investment policy is one of them, so, you know, Randy, when we talk to Scott, we need to ask that question.
Yep.
And my other general comment is what Mr. Browning has brought forward. If any of us were making an investment in, you know, whatever the investment is, we would want to know this information before making the investment, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments under courtesy of the floor?
President Kelly? Can you hear me?
Very good. Moving on, Agenda Item 14. We need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Do I hear said motion?
Motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor of authorizing payment of our invoices and disbursements, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges, what is your vote? We may have lost her. Well, motion carries four to zero. I can't hear the other commissioner. Thank you. We have no executive session this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good, thank you. This meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending. Have a good evening.